Okay, that is carried. Thank you. So we'll start the Committee of the Whole. You have the agenda before you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest with respect to the items on the Committee of the Whole agenda? Okay, there being none. We'll start with item number one, which is the Planning and Building Services Report 2014-32, and it relates to the 212 Davis Drive, and the primary recommendation is that this matter be referred to a public meeting. Can I have a motion with respect to the recommendation? Counselor Kerwin, seconded by Regional Counselor. Do you wish to speak to that, Counselor Kerwin?
No, we've, no, Mr. Mayor, it's-
It's absolutely wonderful that I compliment Regional Counselor John Taylor and yourself for pushing this. We need rental apartments, and hopefully this project gets underway as soon as possible, and is completed as soon as possible, because we have a lot of people who would like to rent apartments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Regional Counselors, the secondor?
I'll make a very brief comment, because I do think it's an important project to see moving forward, and a lot of work's gone on to both the regional and the municipal level, involving the Ward Counselor, Mayor, and others, and the Chair Fish as well, and just seeing the work of the Human Services Planning Board on Make Rental Happen, I think was quite engaged in this process as well, and to see a pilot project coming forward that will actually create more rental housing in York, all of York region than has been created in the last decade, is a significant step forward, and to be able to see that happen here in New Market, and in partnership with New Market and the region, is a very positive thing, and I think it provides some very, very important housing options to the residents of our town.
Thank you. Counselor Sponge.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments of the Regional Counselor and Counselor Kerwin, but I also have, and I also would like to commend Mr. Bear Holtz to have agreed to meet separately with the residents that have expressed some concerns, minimal concerns, in terms of the buffering on Queen Street. The only question I have very quickly, Mr. Mayor, to either the CEO or the Commissioner, is I understand that the agreement in terms of the pilot project, the deferral and so forth, is still being worked out. I just wonder, will we have an agreement in place to sign soon enough?
Mr. Brennis?
I am not, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not certain whether it will be available for the August meeting, but I guess what's most important is that, as it already has started, they would like to get it done in this term of council, and certainly before the triggers for the new development charges file up.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Hippen?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, question to staff. Here it states that the town also agreed to defer the planning application fees, and I'm just curious if staff can maybe comment on any type of risk that we may have in that working with, through the planning application process, and then having the potential of the property being maybe sold after we have agreed to them developing the property?
Mr. Brennis?
Well, those through you, Mr. Mayor, as with the regional, similar regional policy that's being adopted, will need to be matters that are addressed in the agreement that is entered into, and hence, when that agreement comes forward and is finalized, that's something that members of council may wish to pay attention to. But we could certainly, when the agreement comes forward, request that the staff bring, identify how that issue's dealt with.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you. Yes, very good question. I was actually thinking about that. You want to put this, get this done by this term of council. So, this is a pilot project, and is there any, do we have any measures in place as to, you know, how we're going to measure the success of this pilot project? What, like, what have you put in place that, I mean, I know that the deferral, the deferral of development charges is to encourage other rental developers to build, and I'm just wondering, what kind of measures do we have in place for the success of this pilot project?
Mr. Brennis?
Well, I think through you, Mr. Mayor, the measure of success will be the project proceeding, moving forward, and that, something that hasn't happened for many years in the town of New Market, that a rental building will be constructed and used and devoted for rental purposes for an extended period of time. A pilot project means that you do it once and that you learn from it, and that, I think, will be the measure of success, and how it'll be evaluated, if it's something to be continued with others and other future developments going forward.
So I'm assuming that this pilot project would be successful, because, you know, they're, you know, we are deferring the development charges. I'm just wondering, is this, this policy will be applying to other rental developments as well, right? I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to get into my head that the whole reason you're doing this is to encourage others to step up, so I'm assuming that the other rental developers will also receive the benefit of this deferral of development charges, correct?
Mr. Brennis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is something that council can consider going forward, and this being a pilot, if there are no changes necessary, it could be in a similar form, or in a revised and improved form, but it is something that we've identified as a low risk, but high value, low risk to municipality, but high value to the applicant, and if it's something that works at 212 Davis, council would then be in a position to consider it in other future developments, too.
Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks. Yeah, just to comment in a similar vein, I think that the point of this pilot project, at least in my estimation, was to not, not so much as to encourage future rental development, hopefully, though, to, at least to create some interest. I think that's fair to say, but it was really to encourage a single development to move forward, and again, a measure of success is to have, have more rental units built in this project than has been built in the last decade throughout the region, and individual, in any, in any capacity is quite a measure of success, if it moves forward, and I think that's part of the point of the pilot. It's, it's still going through the process, and it's getting very far down. It looks very hopeful, but they're still working out financial details, and the final agreement hasn't, hasn't been put in place, so it's really about, you know, was this enough of an incentive to get somebody to move forward? And then, there'll be follow-up with the developer themselves, and would they do it again? Was this, you know, there's, I think there's a possibility, and certainly a note through the Human Services Planning Board and the region of York itself, they're, we're examining other, other possible best practices throughout North America and even Europe around rental, and speaking with other levels of government to see how they might participate in addressing this issue, as it's all across Ontario, and in fact, certainly across pockets of the country. So I think it's a very early pilot, it's a, it's a one-project pilot, to see if there was enough, working in partnership and providing an incentive, and to see this project move forward. And it looks like it's going to be successful, but it'll be reviewed in terms of what other measures need to be brought, and then it'll be monitored year over year. I mean, it's, it's quite possible, in five or 10 years, due to market conditions, and perhaps due to pilot projects and incentives, that the vacancy rate will improve substantially, and there'll be no longer need for, for such incentives, but it's, I think it's really a one-step-at-a-time kind of process.
Thank you. Counselor Hippen?
Thank you. I'm excited about the project as well, and the municipality does need it, and we have, we hear from residents constantly that they'd like to see some alternative housing for seniors, and it's a great project. I just want to see that we limit our risk, and my concerns are that we don't have an LC or a letter of credit securing this, and I'm looking forward to staff's report coming forward on, we're going to be incurring costs on, on the planning stage, and how we're going to protect ourselves and the residents of this community.
Okay, thank you.
It's impossible to get that back in an information report, because I, we have had information, certainly at the regional level in this, and we have contained the risks significantly, and I think we should probably get that outlined. There is a, there is, as my recollection goes, there's a certain amount of risk, but there are mechanisms that the municipality has to recoup the dollars, and there are things within the agreement that could maybe be outlined, so I do think it's important that we understand. And I, and like Counselor Hippen, I can't recall all the details myself.
Mr. Brennis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't discussed it with the, the planning department or the municipal solicitor. It may be that it's just as easy that, depending on how far work is proceeded at the regional level, or internally, that the entire matter come forward in the time it would take to create an information report. So, but we'll look into it, try and see how it could be activated.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton?
Just add that there was an earlier report on this, as I recall, that we can recirculate for council members, just a bit of background, in terms of the, of the method that's being used to incent this type of development.
All right. No further questions or discussion, then. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Now, we have another item that's being referred to a public meeting. That's item number three. So while we're on referring items to public meeting, sorry. So, yeah, I'm sorry, that, yeah, we're not, this is not recorded, because we're in committee now, so, okay? Thank you. Okay, item number three is 345, 351 Davis Drive, and that's report number 2014-33, and again, the essence of the recommendation is that this item be referred to a public meeting. I'm just wondering if we could deal with that, and go forward with that. So could I have a motion with respect to item number three in the recommendations? Counselor vague, seconded by Regional Counselor. Again, as I said, it's fairly straightforward, and it's a matter of referring a development application forward to a public meeting, which is part of the normal process. Any discussion on that? That's item three, yes. All those in favor? None opposed, and that is carried. And then, having said that, I think, I believe, item number five- No, they're not. No, because we're not doing, we're not going by consent. Okay? So items number five, six, and seven is the assumption of municipal underground services, and those are fairly routine as well, and I'm just wondering if we could move all three of those? Counselor vague, Counselor Sponga, all those in favor? Any opposed, and that is carried. Thank you. So that leaves us with item number two and four. So item number two is the, is report number Environmental Services 2014-49, and it's related to the leash-free dog park. Could I have motions with respect to the recommendations?
I'll give those motions, but I just want to change slightly item two, that the capital budget be kept at 150,000, so the original 50,000 from the town.
Okay, so-
So increase from 100 to 150.
Okay. So that's recommended, the motion is amended? Regional Counselor, seconded. Counselor Twinn, do you wish to speak to it as the mover?
No, I just, you know, I need to leave, I'm dealing with this for some time, and obviously I'm just very, very excited to see that this is continuing to move forward. Thrilled to see that this is continuing to move forward. Certainly, there's been, I've had many conversations with many residents in the town, really looking forward to having a dog park in the town of New Market. One of the gentlemen, actually, the first gentleman that came to our PIC on that night, he actually didn't live in New Market, his family lived here, his children, and he was looking to moving here, but one of the, one of the reasons that he needed to, he wanted to come to the PIC was to make sure that we were going to have a dog park here, because that was important to him, and he was, if we did not have a dog park in the town of New Market, he wouldn't be considering moving here. So I think that's a, it sent a, you know, I mean, that was a strong message to say that we need to have these kind of facilities and, and recreation facilities for people to take their dogs to, and I'm looking forward to this sort of, this is sort of like a pilot project for us, too. I'm looking forward to this taking off, and, and looking at other possibilities in the future as well, for other areas to have community parks, so, yeah.
Thank you. Could I just clarify?
Sure.
With the change to item number two-
Correct.
Which takes that from 150 to, from 100 to 150.
Yeah.
Item number three, then, refers-
Continues, right?
Refers to taking 70,000-
Right, that would change that as well.
To 50?
Yeah, please, thank you.
All right, so that's amended as well.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Regional Counselors, the secondor?
Yeah, thanks very much. This is, this is, you know, exciting. It's a, there's a lot of projects to go on in town, and, but this one has had a lot of work, and a lot of public involvement, and first of all, I want to thank all the volunteers who have, you know, created fundraisers, and done walk-a-thons, and raised dollars, and some of the larger naming donors that are contributors that are coming forward as well for their participation. I think, you know, Bradford, Aurora, Richmond Hill, the list goes on, have dog parks, the city of Calgary, I believe, has 50 dog parks. I think it's widely recognized that dog parks are a fairly important recreational asset for a town to have, in order to serve a complete community. And so this is, to see this finally happen, I know we've tried before, and it's not always easy, but to see this solution coming forward, and a solution that frankly, I think is innovative in the sense that it really significantly reduces the burden on, on the general taxpayer by having so much of the, of the dollars fundraised for the construction of this park, is, I think, you know, and through naming rights, is a, is an interesting direction, and I know there's fundraising that will continue to be ongoing throughout this process, and the group's excited at continuing with that. So I just think a lot of congratulations around to those people who were, have been involved from the very start, and, you know, several years ago, in the community, and the work they've done, and-
It's the length of time, I believe.
Length of time.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I'll, two of them, this is a success story.
Yes, and so it's, it's a really, it's, it's good news, exciting. I'm really looking forward to hopefully seeing this project completed in the near future, and, and I do think there'll be probably some interest in the community to, to at least look at, and look at other possibilities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you. I just have a few questions here. I'm a little bit confused about the capital budget. Okay, so the, the motion that was recommended now, changing the capital budget to be increased from 100,000 to 150,000, thereby, we are not taking an extra 20K from the-
Development charges.
Development charges, is that correct? Okay. My, here's my question. I'm just, I was just reading through this report, and what I've noticed here is that staff is claiming that the town has received a commitment towards the target that exceeded by double the amount of staff in community services, and has confirmed that sponsorship commitments have reached $100,000, and that's terrific news. I would love, you know, it's, I know we, we have a lot of money to raise through the community with the Old Town Hall, but I'm trying to figure out whether this is an actual commitment, if we've actually had anything in writing. Do we have, we don't have the money. We have a commitment for this money, 100,000, $100,000 from somebody in the, in the private sector, I'm imagining, and I just want to know whether we have this in writing, or, you know, before we actually commit to using our budget for this.
I'll ask the director. Mr. Service?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we don't have signed contracts yet. We're in the process of finalizing those contracts. Nothing will proceed until contracts are signed, though.
So you have a sign, you're going to have a signed contract before we spend a single dime-
Yes.
On this project?
That is correct, yes.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, why, why have we increased the budget, simply because they, because this, they, you know, our sponsorship efforts doubled, and that automatically means we are doubling, or we're increasing our budget for it, because of the, of an enhanced design? I mean, I really do have a problem with that, I'm sorry, but when we commit a certain number of taxpayer funds-
Yeah.
And, you know, then come back a few months later and say, well, you know what, the design is actually a lot nicer, so we need a little bit more money. I have a problem with that.
Mr. Service?
And I think this might be a question better answered by Rachel, but my understanding is that the amount of contribution that the town had agreed to through DUCs was, was the 50,000, and that would be matched by fundraising, and that that is continuing, that the town is going to contribute the 50,000, that the additional fundraising efforts are, are what is being used to enhance the park.
So, so there is no additional money in our, in the town's budget anymore?
My understanding- Perhaps if we could just have Rachel respond first-
Sure.
And then we can carry forward. Thank you.
The original capital estimate was for $100,000 total, and that was based on a very preliminary idea of what would be required there, which was mostly based on fencing and a few other items, but as a result, we have refined the design quite a bit better now, and we also had to have a survey, and the survey indicated that there was a bit more grading to do than we expected. Also, we were eliminating a lot of comfort items for our residents, such as benches, and special trees, and things of the sort. So, once we saw that there was a commitment for $100,000 in funding, we thought it would be a great time to add those additional items that we were planning to postpone until we had more funding.
Okay, but, but I guess my, and I understand these things happen, but I guess when we, you know, when you come to council and you ask us to put money in a budget for something with a number, and it's happened before, where you come with a number, and then you come back months later and say, well, we need more, and quite frankly, I've actually seen in the past where we have given, given you money, extra money for projects, and then it comes back, the tender comes back, and it's actually cheaper. And this is a risky thing, because sometimes council may decide not to go ahead with a project, and we wouldn't know. So is there any way that we can, you know, prevent this from happening? I mean, I guess maybe I'm just new at this, but I don't understand why, you know, you come to council with a number, and, and almost always it comes back, and you say, well, you know, we need a little bit more money for this, and we have enhanced designs. I don't, I don't feel comfortable making decisions on those factors, so-
Ms. Perdom.
The-
Maybe if you could clarify, I think this is an original estimate, and I'd like to know as to whether or not the municipality is paying any more money.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
The original estimate was for the town to pay 50,000, and it's still for the town to pay 50,000 at this time.
Okay, so you don't have any note or anything, but you're not going to be moving ahead with the project unless, until we get that in writing, and that we actually have the funds in our account. Is that correct?
Until we have a commitment of payment of those funds. It will involve a payment plan.
Oh, wait a minute, a commitment, or I'm asking, are we going to have the funds in the town reserves? Because you're taking it from our town reserves right now, and I cannot support that unless I know that that reserve will be replaced. And I don't mean a note of a commitment, I mean an actual check for $100,000 in our accounts. Is that going to happen before we start construction?
No.
Yes or no? No, then I can't support it.
Okay, this would not be unusual in terms of having sponsorship, like with the Magna Center, et cetera, once we have a signed contract and a commitment, and then, so this is not an unusual, or, I guess, an abnormal process. Is that correct, Mr. Service?
That is correct. The process that we are going to outline here is that there will be a five-year repayment plan, so they have to put, a naming rights holder would have to put down half of their total sum in one, in an initial payment, and then a five-year for the remainder, for a 10-year naming rate.
Right.
So they would pay an annual fee of each amount.
Right, and I'm not, certainly not, I'm certainly not in any way, you know, disreputing the person who has committed these funds. I think it's wonderful, but we also have notes and promises about, I don't know, soccer clubs that we're supposed to pay back, and I haven't seen that.
That's not a matter, that's not a matter before us.
But I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor, I know you have a practice, but I believe in policy. I believe in policy. We have policies to make sure that certain practices are fulfilled, and this, I'm not, is not in my comfort zone, due to other prior experience.
Thank you. Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. Again, I just want to say this is a very good news story, and a, a good day for the community. The fact that we're moving forward at a $150,000 dog park, and 100,000 is being provided through the community, at a minimum 100,000, there's still there fundraising dollars that'll go towards benches and trees, et cetera. So, great to see this amenity with very little impact locally. I think the other point is, is that the, the signed agreements prior to construction was a requirement of the council motion originally put forward by Counselor Twinn, myself, and this council, and so, you know, we, we made sure that that requirement was there to begin with, and, and we're keeping the town budget exactly where it was from the start, at the $50,000. So, this is great news, and I respect if, if there's a person who doesn't feel comfortable with naming rights over a period of five years, and those dollars being submitted over those times, that's, that's the prerogative, and I'm comfortable with going forward this way. I'm glad we didn't refuse to go forward with the Magna Center, because Frank Stronach was going to pay over a number of years, because we would not have a Magna Center today. So I'm glad we did that, but I also accept that some people want the money in the bank, and that's, that's a fair perspective.
Thank you.
But I'm excited for this project, glad to see it move forward, and, and really grateful to the community who stepped up to support it.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio, a second time?
Thank you. I actually forgot to ask. I know that you had a PIC with local residents, is that correct? Was that, I'm not sure how the, I'm sure, did you invite the local residents in the area of the proposal, or was it just local dog owners and businesses, that sort of thing? And, and my concern is because of the sanitary noise, safety reasons, that sort of thing. I want to make sure that, that was part of it.
Yeah, okay. I attended the PIC. I don't know if there's any other members who attended the PIC, and I believe the response rate was, was I-
Right, but I was asking staff who they sent the invitations. I didn't ask staff who council attended. I wanted to know who the invitation was sent to. Did you target dog owners and business, dog, dog businesses, or did you target residents?
Ms. Perdom, did you issue the notices, or?
Yes, we targeted the entire community, all of New Market.
All of New Market?
Yes.
And, and that was done through the newspapers?
Through the newspapers, through our website, through invitations, yes.
And per, and if you can, if I can, through you, Mr. Mayor, ask perhaps Counselor Twinn or Regional Counselor John Taylor, I know that you had sent, you had an email list, or you had a committee, and I'm assuming you sent that notice to that committee as well? Is that correct?
Yeah, the, I guess the issue here is, did the municipality-
It was just a simple, simple question, if you- Right, okay, but it was targeted to the dog owners, is that correct? Yes, okay, thank you. So I guess that my other concern as well is, you know, we, we sort of, you know, majority of residents don't always read the newspapers, they don't always see these things. I'm just, you know, we, we were sort of, the councillors that are in favor of this, or at least lobbying for it, certainly did a great job in lobbying and targeting specific groups, like dog owners and businesses, but I, besides the newspaper ad, what, did the town do anything else in targeting general residents? I'm just, I just want to make sure that this is balanced for those homeowners that live in the area.
Ms. Perdom, in terms of the, the circulation, is the circulation in accordance with the town's policies? Did we have the reach that we would normally have for any project, and that would include, you know, the surrounding neighbors? Is that policy upheld?
Well, I believe we reached a lot more people than we normally do with PICs, and the fact that we had 26-
Please let her finish.
Yeah, but I'm just, but-
Please let her finish.
But point of order, Mr. Mayor, point of order.
My point of order is that you're, my point of order is that you're interrupting staff, so please let staff finish.
Mr. Mayor, are you saying that I'm not allowed to have a point of order?
Yes, you can have a point.
Like any other council member? I just said point of order.
What's your point of order, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My point of order is, that was not the question I asked, and you interrupted my question to Ms. Prudhomme.
That's not a point of order.
My question to Ms. Prudhomme was, did you, what exactly did you do besides put a notice in the newspaper? Is that our practice? Is that all we've done? I'm just-
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Now-
I would like an answer to that.
Ms. Perdom, if you would answer, I would ask Counselor DiMuccio not to interrupt this time. Ms. Perdom?
All I can tell you at this time is that I know for sure that it was in the newspaper, and it was also on our website. I believe that there were notices sent out, but I would have to get back to you on exactly who received those notices, as it was done by the manager in our department.
Thank you, and-
Thank you.
I'm, I'm still in the queue. I would like to ask the clerk a question that, as per legislation, is a point of order an interruption? Because the mayor implied that, when I said point of order, that I was interrupting.
Yes, you were interrupting. She was in the middle.
Well, I, I asked, again, Mr. Mayor, you interrupted. I asked the clerk, through you, to the clerk, is a point of order considered an interruption?
It's the interpretation of the chair, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Kerwin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a PIC, Public Information Center, we have many of them every year, and all PICs are open to everyone in the municipality, even people who are not in the municipality come to those PICs, and I did attend this one, because I was genuinely interested. If you go back and look at unfinished business, which we always deal with at Committee of the Whole, and then they go to council, the concept of a leash-free dog park has been unfinished business for many, many years, probably three to four terms of council that I've been on, and I was on the committee twice to establish a leash-free dog park, and unfortunately, we weren't able to find the, the right location, and it behooved us that this was moved over to this term of council, which is four years. And I'd like to compliment and, and praise the, the group that, that found the spot, and it's located in Counselor Twinn's ward, Ward Three, along the Holland River, in the George Richardson Park area, and it's been a complete, to me, a success story. There is not the animosity of locating a, a leash-free dog park in, in my neighborhood. There really wasn't any great deal of opposition to this location, and not only that, people stepped forward, most generously, as they do in New Market, to almost every project where we have fundraising, and they raised money above and beyond what we thought they would raise, and quite frankly, I'm very happy that this has come off the unfinished businesses that we've been dealing with over probably 10 years now, since Ray Snow last sought on council. I'm happy to see the, this has been resolved. It's been an issue that the residents have demanded, and I, I compliment the, the committee on the innovative way that they handle it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Regional Counselors? Regional counselor, second time, third time?
I might be fourth, thanks. Thanks for pointing it out. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention, I think it is important to mention that the, the notification requirements for, for our meetings that we have deal with certain radiuses around affected areas. This dog park is quite a distance, quite a distance, and I have it on my, up on my screen right now from the nearest home, and I recall from discussions, that's one of the reasons why staff felt it was better to approach it from a townwide basis and try to put, put the, the notification out as widely as possible, because there are no homes within which it was typically be considered a radius. This, this, that's why this site was chosen, that's why this site has received a favorable response, and it also is the reason why the notification is different than perhaps what the counselor was questioning about. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manuel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies to everyone why I'm, I was late, I had an appointment before, but joining in, I, I want to express appreciation to my colleagues, especially Regional Counselor Taylor and Counselor Twitty, for their leadership in this. I remember Counselor Kerwin's comments said, prior to my being on council, I think it was early 2000s, when there was the desire to put one at Kirby Crescent, and there was a great deal of opposition in that neighborhood, and, and we tried to take it on in a term after, and it was not pretty, trying to find a location that worked for everyone, and I think the two counselors will agree that I was, I didn't think it would happen. But to find a location that I think has, you'll never have unanimity, but to have broader support, but also to have the private sector step up so much, I have trouble finding fault in any process like this. So just to express my appreciation, this is exciting and excited to move forward on this. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll call the question then, all those in favor. Opposed? That's still carried, thank you. Final item then is item number four, I believe, and that is the Development Building and Planning Services Report 2014-34. It relates to proposed medical development, Mulelock Canada Medical, Inc., at 536, 550 Mulelock Court. The recommendation is that the application be denied. Could I have a mover and a second, or please?
I'd like to move that, Mr. Mayor. I'll second it.
Okay. Counselor Kerwin and Counselor Sponga? Counselor Kerwin, as a mover?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would love to compliment the, the planning department. This is a superb report that protects the integrity of established residential areas. I support the residents who filled this council chamber when this first proposal came to, to our attention. Due process has been adhered to, and the, the application to resume into an established residential area and turn it into commercial has been denied, and the reasons are exemplified in this report. And quite frankly, the residents couldn't be happier, I couldn't be happier as the ward counselor for Ward Two. But it's, it's a generic report in many ways, because hopefully we can go forward and, and protect established residential areas from incursion of, of commercial development, Mr. Mayor. It just didn't fit in that area, and the traffic would have been prohibitive, so.
Thank you. Counselor Sponga?
Quickly, I just want to say that this is a testament to a municipality that is open to development, but smart development, development makes sense, and, and that indeed we put a lot of importance and we do follow our land use policies that were influenced by public consultation, our official plan. And so this is an example of basically the community, our planning staff, and our council working together, so kudos to our planning staff and to the ward counselor for his work on this one.
Thank you. Counselor Twitty?
It's just more of a question, couldn't agree with you more, Counselor Kerwin, that I think it's, it was not an appropriate spot to put that development there. But I'm just wondering, one of the comments from the agencies is from the region, saying that they had no objections to the development, and I'm assuming that now the, whoever, the developer would have the right to go to the OMB to fight this at the OMB if they so choose to do so, is that correct? And I'm just wondering, those comments from the, you region are basically saying that they had no objections to the development, and how strong, you know, I know, I don't know if we can answer this in public session, session as much, how strong of a position do we have that to, we can ensure that we will be able to win this?
I'll call on Mr. Nethery to come forward.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I guess we, because you're right, it may be finding its way to the OMB, we have to sort of keep our powder dry a little bit in terms of whether or not a, a broad conversation can take place in public as opposed to in camera. But that said, you know, it's entirely appropriate that the region may have had some technical comments that were not posing a, a particular object, objection from their specific traffic engineering and access to regional road perspective, but there were broader issues that I think were canvassed well in the report, that we have to look at the broader issue and not just particular agency comments. It's not unusual to see a lot of agencies not having a particular problem, but that collectively there are some other issues that still need to be dealt with.
A good, a good, how do I say, I guess you feel confident, it's a good, strong set of criteria that would not, would be in favor of us not being, like, being able to secure that as not a, keeping it as residential.
Mr. Mayor, we, this was one that we actually agonized over, because, you know, the, the applicant to their credit had done a lot of work to try to resolve and mitigate issues, but on balance, we, we weren't able to support it on the basis of the information that's in there, not the least of which are the, the negative consequences that would be on the, on the, the character of the neighborhood and how it would be affected by not just the traffic, but certainly traffic is a very key item there, but also just the intrusion of that use adjacent to the residential area. We did make some reference that there might be some other interesting exit strategies that they could think of on that property. It's not, it's not a dead property, it could very well be utilized for other purposes, not the least of which perhaps some slightly higher density residential uses and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Thank you. Regional counselor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Nethery. If you could just confirm, I think you said at least half of this, but just that the,[1736.46]